Good evening. People are still joining. We'll be getting started shortly.
Hi, this is Judy Rakovich, one of the sign language interpreters. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, great. I just wanted to let you know that we will be switching, Kim and I, we're both interpreters, we'll be switching 15 minutes on and off. Like, I'll be interpreting for 15 minutes and then Kim will be interpreting for 15 minutes. But we need somebody to control the screens so that I can go off and Kim can go on every 15 minutes. Is that possible?
What we usually do is have attendees pin whoever's doing ASL. Like, we can't pin you on our own, on our side. So we can make a note that there are two of you that they'll have to, you know, pin or keep track of, if that works.
I don't know if that's going to work because if there are no deaf attendees...
What was that?
If there are no people that are deaf that are attending?
I'm not sure if there are or not.
Well, that's what I mean. If there are no deaf people that are attending, they won't be able to pin us. So is there any way that we can have control ourselves so that I can click off and Kim can click on when the 15 minutes is up?
I don't think we have that capacity within the setup that we have.
So when you see your screen at the bottom, do you see where there is an audio connect and a start video connect? You should be able to click the down arrow to, or just start video and when it's on, it should say stop video.
Right, right. But will we be able to see each other? Will Kim be able to see me and will I be able to see her? Because I've had this problem with WebEx before where we couldn't see each other to let each other know that we were coming on and it was time to go on.
Yeah, if you pin each other on your end, you'll be able to, then your video will be what's focused on.
Okay, and how can I pin her and her me? Up top? Oh, I see. I think. Where'd she go? I don't see her anymore. Where'd Kim go? There's Kim. Okay, let me see if I can do that now.
Move it to the stage, then it'll pop up where I'm next to the slide.
Say that again, Kim.
If you click on like the three dots by my name, it may move to stage is what it's titled. It's the first one and it has like a thumb tack.
Okay, you're like moving all over the place right now. Okay, so there we go. It says, you said move to stage. Okay, just did that. Okay. Okay, so then you'll be able to see me and I'll be able to see you.
I've pinned you, so you're in on my front. So when you go off, I'll see, or like whoever is first or whatever.
Right, so then I have to pin you when I'm on?
No, you can leave me pinned so you see if I'm, like, as soon as, for you, I'm the only one that's pinned. So it'll stay there. So like if my screen goes off, you'll see me go blank.
Okay, that's fine. Got it, got it. Okay, good. Thank you, ladies. Sorry for that little bit, but you know how it goes sometimes. And Jen.
Thank you for being here to provide the services.
Absolutely.
We have a few people that are still joining, so we're just going to give it another minute or two. Thank you for your patience and for being here today. Good evening, everyone. Before we begin, we want to let you know that we are offering American Sign Language this evening and closed captioning for our forum. To access the ASL interpretation, please find the videos for the ASL interpreters, which are listed as ASL interpreters, followed by their name. Once you find them, you can lock or pin their video to your screen so that you can see them throughout the presentation. I will note there are two who have joined us, so just keep that in mind as you're pinning. To access our closed captioning services, on the bottom right corner of the screen, there's a multimedia box. Click on that box. You will then see the CC start option. You can select the language, font size, and color that best meets your needs. At this time, all members of the public joining the conversation are muted and will remain muted until the comment period at the end of the formal presentation. This hearing is being recorded and will be posted on the OPWDD website on the strategic planning page in the coming days. The agenda for tonight's forum includes a quick welcome from the commissioner. We'll then provide a brief overview of our draft 2023 to 2027 strategic plan, including an overview of stakeholder input, the contents, and goals and objectives. And then we'll shift to the public comment period. Following the presentation, when we do shift to the public comments, people will be provided an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. Commissioner?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here with us tonight. We're very eager to hear from all of you your thoughts on our draft strategic plan and the direction that we'll take as we move forward together to continue to build our service system into all we want and need it to be. As many of you know, starting last year, we went out and sought public feedback into the areas that we needed to invest time and energy into improving our service delivery system. We took all that feedback and created the draft plan that we are here to talk about tonight. That draft plan was issued in May to the community. You can find it on our website in many languages and also in a plain language format for your review if you have not done so tonight. As we've traveled around the state hosting public stakeholder forums, we've heard many thoughtful remarks, many great ideas, and it's obvious the level of investment that our community has in our system and in the people that we support, individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. After each event, we leave feeling more informed on the wants and the needs of our service system, the people we support, their families, our providers, and the general public. As you know, the strategic plan, or the 507 plan as it's sometimes called, is a comprehensive plan for OPWDD setting the direction of the agency over the course of the next five years. We are very excited to be here tonight to discuss this plan. I encourage everybody to participate tonight, to share their thoughts and their feelings on the strategic plan. And if you have, if you for any reason don't want to participate this evening by sharing your thoughts and your feedback publicly, Jessica will talk through multiple ways that you can share written feedback on our website through an email or through a forum. So thank everyone for being here tonight, and I look forward to hearing your thoughts and comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. So as I mentioned, this presentation includes a brief overview of the contents of the draft strategic plan, also known as the 507 document, as the commissioner noted, and references to the section of mental hygiene law related to our strategic training process. The document includes the strategic planning input and data section, strategic goals and objectives, which is the bulk of the document, and then the evaluation, conclusion, and appendices. It also includes our larger vision for how we plan to use our goals and objectives to inform long-term planning and some immediate next steps. In addition to what we will share in this presentation, the full draft document includes specific activities and projects to help us meet our identified goals and objectives. As a reminder, the full draft strategic plan can be found on the strategic planning page of our website at opwdd.nyork.gov/strategic/planning. To prepare for the 2023-2027 strategic plan, OPWDD invited input from its many stakeholders, including self advocates, family members, organizations, providers, and others in the spring and summer of 2021. Input was provided through five regional public hearings where we heard from over 100 speakers. We also held meetings and had collected targeted input from 33 different stakeholder groups, including self advocacy groups, family organizations, provider organizations, disability councils, and underrepresented communities. Additionally, we collected emails and comments through our existing stakeholder committees and in meetings, and received input from our Developmental Disability Advisory Council. We also analyzed Medicaid data, which is available now on our website, staff stability data, and reviewed some national data and trends related to people with developmental disabilities. Through all of the stakeholder engagement and data analysis, the following key priorities were repeatedly identified by many of you and others. That OPWDD should focus on addressing the DSP workforce crisis, that we should look to improve our self-direction model, improve our housing supports and services, make sure that we're supporting people with complex needs better, improve our use of data and our transparency with stakeholders, and support researcher programs and services. Additional categories that were mentioned include employment, children's services, health equity, and improving access to supports for those who are from underserved communities. Based on that input and the data, we drafted the following three goals for our 2023 to 2027 draft strategic plan. The first goal is to support people in the most person-centered ways. The second is to promote practices that strengthen the workforce and infrastructure. And the third is to advance systems change and innovation across the state. As noted, Goal One will focus on supporting people in the most person-centered and holistic ways possible. To do this, OPWDD will improve supports and services for people with developmental disabilities throughout their lifespan of all ages by addressing gaps in services and ensuring supports are focused on individual needs, offer choice, maximize independence, and increase community integration and participation. To help meet this goal, OPWDD will focus primarily on the following objectives. The first is to increase opportunities for community integration and participation, supports that facilitate self-determination, and activities that improve social determinants of health. The second is to ensure children, youth, and young adults receive appropriate and coordinated services within the context of the school, family, and community. The third is to expand and improve services targeted for people with complex support needs, including residential and crisis services and behavioral support. And the fourth objective under Goal One seeks to identify and address gaps in services and support that meet the needs of underserved culturally and ethnically diverse communities. Goal Two focuses on advancing the OPWDD system by investing in the workforce, updating the system to better support service delivery, and increasing access to information. We'd like to improve recruitment, retention, and the quality of the direct support in disability workforce. We're also interested in advancing technology and our information infrastructure, and we'd like to explore approaches to increase the availability and timeliness of data that we're using and to use that data to support our decision-making, monitor performance, and assess the quality of services that we're providing. Additionally, we'd like to continue to promote opportunities like this and others for stakeholders like you all to continue to inform our decision-making and long-term planning. Lastly, OPWDD is interested in exploring new approaches and opportunities that advance the system, reduce complexity, and improve response. the system, reduce complexity, and improve responsiveness. To meet this goal, we plan to strengthen the quality, equity, and effectiveness of support. This includes our self-direction model, competitive integrated employment services, the continuum of housing and residential options, and our care management services. We'd also like to increase opportunities to explore and implement regulatory and policy changes that support greater flexibility and incentivize improved personal outcomes. And lastly, we'd like to prioritize innovation by evaluating our programs, conducting research, and developing opportunities to test new approaches to service delivery. The draft document also includes an evaluation section, which speaks to how we plan to use both qualitative and quantitative data to measure our progress on meeting these goals and objectives. In addition to data, we plan to have ongoing stakeholder conversations to assess the impact of the work that we're doing. We'll also look at national and state data analysis, state data, and analyze that and review that on an ongoing basis. The conclusion speaks to how we plan to provide updates regularly to all of you throughout the year. There'll be an annual report every November, and we have a website specific, a webpage specifically for the 507 and our strategic planning progress and process. Lastly, the document includes a variety of different appendices, which share additional information on our services, a terminology list, and a more detailed overview of the stakeholder feedback that I just mentioned previously. The goals and objectives within the 2023 to 2027 strategic plan, we believe, provide a roadmap for stabilizing the service system in the short term while also laying out important research, evaluation, and innovation activities that will inform ongoing system improvement in the long term. We believe the 507 Plan and our strategic plan will assist OPWDD and stakeholders to work together to achieve clear and planned progress on system and waiver reform, ones that move us toward a more person-centered, sustainable, equitable, and coordinated system of supports and services for New Yorkers with developmental disabilities. Up until this point, we've held three other statewide online public hearings. We've also held 12 regional meetings in person across the state over the last two months to receive feedback on our step, on our draft strategic plan. In addition to that, people have been able to submit written feedback to us on the draft document. We are already under, already have underway updates that are happening to the draft document based on the feedback that we've received up to this point, and we'll continue to make those updates in the coming month. Once we've updated the document, we'll be sharing it back with our Developmental Disability Advisory Council, who has a statutory requirement to review that document, and will then submit a finalized version to the governor and legislature, hopefully by November 1st. As the commissioner mentioned, there is an opportunity to submit written feedback. I know many of you have already done so. For those of you who are joining us this evening, if you'd like to submit comments, your comments that you'll be providing in writing, please feel free to do so. You can submit that through our feedback form, which can be found on our strategic planning website page, or you can email it directly to planning@opwdd.nyork.gov. So at this point, the formal presentation has concluded, and we will shift to opening it up for comments. As a reminder, those who are interested in speaking were asked to register to speak in advance of today's hearing. To hear from as many people as possible, we do ask those of you that we get a chance to call on, so please keep your comments to three minutes or less. We will share a timer on screen for speakers to help assist with the three-minute guidance. Please keep in mind that we do have a lot of people on the call, so while we will try to get to everyone who wishes to share comments, we may not be able to do so, and to allow us to get to as many people as possible, we will not be answering any specific questions at this time. If time allows and we get through everybody who has pre-registered to speak, we will then open up the conversation for anybody else who might be interested in providing comments this evening. I'll note that, once we get through everybody, that we'll be opening it up, and for those who are interested, I'll ask you to raise your WebEx virtual hand, and then we'll go through as many people as possible, given the time that's left. So with that, we'll now begin our public comment period. I'll be calling on speakers one by one, at which point, we'll send you a notice to unmute yourself. At the end of the three-minute period, we will re-mute you, and then we'll call on the next speaker and unmute them. So the first speaker this evening will be Kale White.
Yes, hi. Yes, I'm here.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Should I start or wait for the timer? Oh, the timers. Okay, great. All right, thank you very much. My name is Kale White, and I am the Benefit Access Coordinator at the Marlene Myers and JCC Manhattan. We serve a large and diverse population of persons with disabilities and a menu and offer a menu of programs and provide a supportive community for their families and caregivers. OPWDD self-directed services have been a game changer for so many of them, allowing them to blossom and enjoy full and productive lives and to maximize their God-given talents, and we are very grateful that this resource is available to our families. The past couple of years have presented many complicated issues for all of us. We have approached these challenges in a systematic way, collecting data on our interactions with agencies, providers, private professionals, and of course, the OPWDD. This has allowed us to target persistent roadblocks in a strategic way, although we are still struggling to find resolution for several issues preventing our community members from moving forward and accessing services and supports that they very badly need. We invite the OPWDD administration to review some of the information that we have collected to augment their own data sets and to help create a clear picture of where the problems are, and we would be happy to partner with you to research and brainstorm any possible solutions. Please let us know if you are interested in partnering with us and setting up a meeting, and of course, you can find us, the Jack and Shirley Silver Center for Special Needs at the JCC Manhattan. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackie Sauter. Jackie, you should now be unmuted.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Yes, great. Yes, my name is Jackie Sauter. I live in Canton in New York's North Country, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts today. I am the mother of an adult son with Down Syndrome who lives at home with me and my husband. When Stephen was born 37 years ago, I remember feeling gratitude that we lived in New York State, which offered at the time a reassuring and fairly comprehensive array of supports and services. But in the last decade, in small and big ways, our state has neglected the needs of people with disabilities and their families. The result is that we are now a system in crisis. Individuals and families are in crisis. Providers are not receiving the rates they need to stay in the black, so they are cutting services. The extreme shortage of direct care staff across the state is alarming, with vacancies as high as 40% at some facilities, and people enrolled in self-direction are not being able to hire essential staff. The lack of staff means many programs and services are not able to operate safely, if at all. It means individuals residing in certified housing are not getting adequate attention and supervision. Meanwhile, the waitlist for appropriate housing is years long, putting aging families like mine in an uncomfortable situation. Where will our son live, and who will care for him when we, his parents, are no longer able to do so? After so many years of neglect, we are truly in an emergency. I'm confident that our current commissioner and her staff and the local administration care about our loved ones and their families, but we need true commitment and comprehensive action now if we're to avert disaster. The draft 507 Plan is a beginning, but it does not really address the crisis that we're facing. Number one, bonuses and certification programs and PR campaigns are nice, but direct care staff must have meaningful, permanent wage increases. The work can be very hard and requires true commitment. To solve the terrifying vacancy rate, pay them more, a lot more. More money, real money for DSPs, needs to be in this plan. Number two, what happened to family support services? Families do the hard work of caring for children and adults across the lifespan. FSS money seem to be going away. FSS programs seem to be vanishing. Money for and commitment to FSS needs to be in the plan. Number three, there is a desperate need for more housing opportunities. We need a real commitment and bigger investment in certified housing, supported apartments, intentional communities of residences, and other person-centered and forward-looking housing solutions. It seems that many elements of this draft plan rely on COVID relief money and one-time grants. This is not a solution. Our state must demonstrate in its plan that we believe that people with disabilities are citizens and that we are fully committed to providing them with meaningful supports and services so that they might lead their best lives. This year, we marked the 75th anniversary of the opening of the nightmare that was Willowbrook, an American concentration camp, where people with disabilities were warehoused and abused. We can never, ever, ever go back to that. Now is the time with the revised version of this plan that adequately and comprehensively funds essential supports and services for the people we care for for us to truly move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Next is Christopher Wright. Christopher? You should be unmuted.
I'm here. I said hello.
Great, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Good. Okay. First of all, good evening, everyone. I'm Christopher D. Wright. As a lot of you, I am, yes, I'm an advocate for people with disability, but you know, the one thing I'm going to say this again and again, we're supposed to work as a team, parents, individuals, and agencies, and staff, and I hope our elected officials will try to do that as well. We need to remind that funding needs to come in. Family support dollars needs to come in, from housing, for health, for any services for individuals who are home. Are we forgetting this? Are we really forgetting what they are? We have advisory councils, and in the cities, yes, we have DD councils, but we have to work together. We need the dollars for a reason. And I really say this, and I said this in Brooklyn, we need to work together as a team. We need to do this the way that should have been done, getting the services that's needed, because housing is definitely an issue, and you know, any parts of other states is transportation, or it's trying to make sure to get the individuals a very good healthcare. We need to work on these. If we don't, we're going right back in time, and as we deal with the real book, we don't want to go back that way. We want to move forward in continuing advocating for the dollars that we need and what the dollars are being used for. From family support dollars, we need that, and that's for everything we need there. So I encourage you, OPWDD, please, let's work together and get the services that we need. Here are families, here are agencies, here are individuals, including the self-advocacy are saying, we need the dollars. But again, as I said this again and again, we have to work together, and please make, don't say you're making promises we can't keep. We have to make, you have to really work seeing what the families are dealing with, from upstate New York to Long Island to the Five Boroughs. So please, let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Deborah Gray.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good evening. My name is Deborah Gray. I am the chairperson for the Brooklyn Family Support Services Advisory Council and the Brooklyn representative to the statewide advisory council. I am very concerned about the continuation for family support services. Family support services help keep our children home. Ninety-nine percent of our children do not belong in a, which do not and should not ever be in a Willowbrook-type setting. What I'm concerned about is we can't keep up our programs because our staff is not paid well enough. What I would like to see is, I know that the state direct care professionals are paid a very good wage, as well as they get great benefits. I would like to see the same for the voluntary agencies. Their direct care professionals should be paid the same as the state and get the same benefits. Why? They do 99% of the center, and they're very happy working with their individuals. The only reason why they don't stay is because they can't afford to. They have families themselves, and many times, they actually are family members of individuals with developmental disabilities. Please keep working with the 19 advisory councils, the statewide advisory councils, as well as DDAC and the other councils. We all have to work together, because family support programs, most of them have worked very well. Of course, unfortunately, COVID came in, and that was a problem, but that affected every service. But we have to work together to keep, to make sure that we, as parents who have children living at home with us, will continue to get the family support services we need to get the true help we need, because we have saved the state millions of dollars because we're doing the care. But also figure out different ways to get some form of residential placements and different types, which means some individuals should continue living in an apartment, help them keep it with funding from different federal housing programs, and also work with all the ARCs. We have to increase the social security income level so that if our children do want to go to work, they don't have to worry about losing their medical benefits and their, because 99% of services are paid through Medicaid. If a child makes one more dollar than the parent they collect under their social security number, they do lose their Medicaid waiver, and they would have to pay for services, and they could end up being without anything. So we all have to work together to update and change our systems, and remember to keep family support services funded as best as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Kraßner. Mary, you should be unmuted.
Yeah. Hi. Where do I start with all there is to talk about? I'm glad there's a plan, but it's more aspirational than actionable. It needs data to be able to make it measurable. We're struggling in the system that needs more staff for every program. The ARPA funds and bonuses are welcome and useful, but short-lived. Homes have closed, day hubs haven't fully opened, families taking care of children at home can't get enough respite or calm hab to lighten the burden, especially if their kids have medical or behavioral needs. People can only keep their kids at home if support is available, but there isn't enough of that. Credentialing and care ladders, career ladders are also nice, but they don't solve this crisis. There are help-wanted signs everywhere, but these jobs pay more, ask less of people, and offer better benefits. IDD agencies can compete when it's for demanding job that includes the need to care, have patience, and feel compassion, all for close to minimum wage. Personally, workforce turnover makes me worry for my son, who has congenital heart disease among other medical issues, but doesn't have pain receptors. A few years ago, we noticed that he wasn't doing things with his right arm. We went to the hospital, and sure enough, it was broken. We don't know when, we don't know how. He never said a thing, but we noticed. His cardiologist told us we need to report when he's slowing down. Unless you've been around him long enough to have a baseline sense, you can't tell if things are getting worse. The constant turnover of staff in his house and day program means that there's no one there who has spent enough time around him to be able to tell you if he's different because they're not there. We worry, we worry that problems won't be spotted. Another concern is that the 507 plans for residential choices are not realistic about the range of need, especially for people who are aging. The Guardianship Committee of AHR NYC has had to find a place for a number of the formerly healthy, high-functioning people that we are guardians for who have developed serious medical conditions. Some have retained cognitive function, some not, but all have needed a place to live that can deal with peg tubes or colostomy bags. They can't stay in the homes they've lived in for years. We tried to find a bed in an ICF for people with IDD, but many of those beds have been closed, and the few still existing were not available. All there were were nursing homes. None of them were right. This is as painful for us as it would be for their parents if they were alive. Nowhere in the 507 is there a mention of this. Nowhere in the 507 is there a mention of this nor a solution proffered. I'm afraid this problem is only growing as people age. The 507 needs to have more meat on its bones for the workforce and residential opportunities before it's a complete disaster. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Allison Starkman. Allison, you should be unmuted.
Hello. Thank you for having this forum and for this opportunity to speak. My name is Allison Starkman. I am an advocate, self direction broker, as well as the sister slash legal guardian for my beautiful thirty-eight-year-old sister Lauren that chooses to self-direct her services. The following are my recommendations on the 507 plan. For self-direction to truly support the person, there needs to be flexibility and choice within the PRA. Please consider lifting the cap on the IDGS category. Families are aging and some need more assistance. Please consider allowing a paid neighbor to be a part of one's budget, even if the person is residing in their family home. Without additional assistance, some families will not be able to continue to support their loved ones. Broker rates have not increased for well over a decade. We are all aware just how much the cost of living has increased for all. OPWDD and the Department of Health can advocate, amend the waiver, and encourage the governor to support an increase so that CMS can approve this. Many brokers will not be able to sustain doing this long term without an increase. This will reduce turnover, attract more professionals to the field, and eliminate wait lists. OPWDD proposed a five-year plan to utilize funds to engage with a consultant. I am truly baffled by this. We have all heard many strong advocates give solid recommendations. However, this goes nowhere. Why pay a consultant over people with lived experience that want to strengthen the system because their loved one's success depends on it? Many caregivers struggle to even get out of bed. They feel alone and beaten down. I know many strong advocates that have advocated for the same things for over fifteen years and they are still waiting. Please hear the people that stay awake at night with what consumes us, that looming question, what happens when I am gone? There are innovative brokers that offer a sustainable solution, enhanced brokering, utilize us to help with viable options that can be offered to families. Many good brokers that want to support families to the best of their abilities take more than the annual required credits needed. Experienced brokers are not looking for credits. Consider paying the hourly broker fee and you will significantly increase the success of new brokers by having someone with experience that could guide them properly in the crucial first year so that they are successful. And in turn, so are the people and the families they support. This is a win-win for all, a very good use of FMAP funds for a pilot program to mentor new brokers. Please consider raising the thousand-dollar limit on CMBA's to save time as well as administrative costs to OPWDD. In addition to the cost of the individual's budget, this is resulting in very long waiting periods and frustration for many. Family reimburse respite. Not every family can afford to outlay monies and wait to get reimbursed. There are many people in New York, as well as in underserved communities that are struggling. We must find a way for the people that do not have the ability to outlay funds whether due to financial or if the caregiver is hospitalized and cannot feasibly outlay the funds. Household line. The cap of fifteen hundred dollars needs to be removed from this category. We must encourage people that can live independently with the right support to take that next step, and we must give them the tools to do so. With this cap, someone would have to choose between getting help to clean their apartment and cleaning snow so that they can be safe. If we are not giving the proper supports to help them to be successful, we are setting people up for failure. There must be an exception policy as well as flexibility if the cap does not meet the needs of the person. In a perfect world, all these issues that we raise can go away if the government increases your budget four times what it currently is. Since we all know that is not a reality, for the things in your jurisdiction that cost no extra monies, this is feasible. We all know everyone is different, as are their needs. Self-direction is supposed to be person-centered. We must meet the needs of the person and allow some flexibility so that people can be successful utilizing and keeping self-direction if that is the best fit for the person. Thank you for the opportunity to address OPWDD strategic plan. There are knowledgeable stakeholders, professionals in the field, families, self advocates, and others that are very thankful for the opportunity to have self-direction. We also see the areas that need to be addressed and improved so that people are successful in living a self-determined life. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Munt. Karen, you should be unmuted. Karen? We'll shift to the next speaker and then, oh. I think you're unmuted now.
Yes, I'm having a little trouble getting that. All right, so, hi to everybody. My comments tonight are about housing, three aspects about housing. First is about the housing subsidy increase. Second is about a glitch in the living caregiver housing arrangement. And third is affordable housing need on Long Island. Okay, so first regarding the housing subsidy increase. My son needs that subsidy increase now. His rent just went up in August quite a bit and we're having, he's having trouble making ends meet. So I'm asking OPWDD to please do the right thing and expedite a dispersal of the funds that have already been approved some time ago, that they are indeed needed right away. Second, regarding the living caregiver housing arrangement. Living caregiver housing arrangement is a very beneficial, potentially a beneficial and wonderful arrangement. But there is a glitch that needs to be addressed. And that is that when the living caregiver portion, when is the housing? Excuse me, I'm losing my words here. When the rent increases, the living caregiver portion of the rent increase falls on my son, who also has to pay his own rent increase. And this becomes a not sustainable situation. But however, there is good news for this. There actually is a fix for this glitch. And I learned about this through my Housing Navigator. In the housing subsidy template, there is a line called quote unquote "other eligible deductions." And this could actually be used to cover and reimburse participants for the living caregiver portion of any rent increase. So I'm asking OPWDD to please recognize this and fix the glitch so that living caregiver fantastic arrangement can really be sustainable. And last but not least is about affordable housing on Long Island. We need our fair share of the housing funding to create affordable housing units here on Long Island. One way is to increase the incentives for local developers on Long Island to use the ISH, which is the Integrated Supported Housing Funds. Another way, helpful thing for affordable housing would be to consider integrating housing for the disabled with senior housing. This could be a very nice win-win arrangement. And last but not least is the Suffolk County Sewer Funding Grant for Affordable Housing. Apparently what's needed for that to be really effective is for OPWDD to provide support letters so that housing developers can utilize this Suffolk County sewer funding for affordable housing projects with set asides. So I ask OPWDD to please do their best, do your best to address these matters. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my concerns. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Ellen Alexander. Ellen, you should be unmuted.
Hi, I'm Ellen Alexander. I lost a minute there. As young parents in early, the early nineteen seventies, we were told to place our autistic son in a state institution. But instead, we kept him home. We knew we would need lifelong, he would need lifelong services. Today, at almost fifty-four years old, he lives in a group home for over thirty years. And he works with assistance of a job coach. Wonderful achievements, but he is still very autistic. He has very specific needs and he can, he needs help to avoid meltdowns when they occur due to miscommunication and lack of structure in his daily life. The staffing crisis means limited staffing with limited training and limited supervision. Person-centered planning is in place, but person-centered services are not consistent. And when we talk about, I saw you heard, you mentioned the person-centered way. I think the 507 plan needs to be much more specific about the services that can be provided. The crisis is permanent and it has to be resolved. Assess the job of the DSP and put them on a career path that will encourage them to stay. Today, the governor announced ten million dollars for training, but nothing into permanent increasing paychecks for DSPs who currently need to work double shifts and take on other jobs to make ends meet. How does the 507 plan address this crisis? We're concerned about assistive technology. Our son uses alternative augmentative device. And it needs to be paid for, needs to be available, and people need to be trained to help him. He was totally locked in his mind until the age of forty, when first exposed to an AAC device with a trained communication partner. No wonder he has meltdowns and gets frustrated at times. How hard it must be to take in a world and want to talk and converse, but not have the technology and the trained people available in his daily life. School districts are training teachers and aides to assist people with these AC devices. Colleges like Berkeley, Harvard, and Rollins are graduating people who learn to communicate with an AAC device and communication. Will my son get the assistance he needs in my lifetime? In his lifetime? Is it, if it's written in the 507 plan and paid for, we can make it happen together? I also feel that cameras are important and should be in the five-year plan. We can't wait. Start in those houses where people can't defend themselves or give reliable verbal testimony. The cameras can be used in a positive way for training and to accommodate staff who are doing the job correctly and willing to learn. Cameras are everywhere today and such an important tool. If not cameras, then what tools are available? The systems in place today are just too limited and not reliable. Any obstacle that has been presented regarding the use of cameras can be overcome with the funding and desire of the state and the OPWDD. Really thank you for this opportunity to share.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kimberly Kajolka. Kimberly, you should be unmuted.
Yes, thank you. My last name is pronounced Kajolka.
Thank you. I had a feeling I probably didn't do it correct, so I appreciate you directing me.
I'm used to it. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. As the Executive Director of Parent Network of Western New York in Buffalo, we are the parent center in Western New York and we work every single day with families who are supporting their child or children with a disability still living at home. One area that makes my organization unique is that almost all of my staff have a child with a disability. So when they speak to a parent or work with a family, they do so from a place of knowing exactly where the family is at. It was terribly disappointing to see that family support services were not included in the draft strategic plan, but I was pleased to learn last week at the OPWDD FSS statewide committee meeting that it will be included in the final draft. Draft. I truly hope it will be and it will be funded sufficiently to provide proper support to meet the needs of families. I have worked in the disability field in New York State for more than thirty years and I have a deep understanding of the multitude of needs that OPWDD must consider. However, I feel the need to reinforce that the families who are caring for their loved ones at home must be included. Yes, all the other areas noted today and previously are important. And specifically, the workforce is vitally important and must be funded accordingly. But families are also primary caregivers. They are not financially compensated for their work, but you cannot discount this as one housing option for those with developmental disabilities in New York State. Families cannot continue to do this work without the support of FSS. These services strengthen families, which in turn strengthens the OPWDD system. This is a cost-effective option for children and adults with disabilities who may otherwise end up in a much more costly option of a residential placement. This is also, this is often also the least restrictive and most community-based as it keeps people in their own familiar neighborhoods. I enthusiastically await the included strategy for supporting families through family support services in the final version of the 507 strategic plan. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you this evening and go Bills.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Judith Gleason. Judith, you should be unmuted.
Judith?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Judith Gleason. Okay, I have pretty much a very simple statement. We have very serious problems in OPWDD system. There's very little person-centered planning. We have to start back with the parents and the individuals. And right now, we're getting so little services. And it's being trickled down because you have CCOs that are taking all our money and they're not providing any of the supports that we need. The biggest problem with self-direction is that it's only for middle and upper class families because they have to lay out money. We have trouble with parents that can't sign docs with Apple computers. We're not getting enough technical assistance. We don't have transition planning. It should be starting at twelve in the schools. And we need a staff database and a database for classes that the FI's all agree to. I have a lot of ideas about housing that can be utilized on the DDRO land in Queens. We could house many, many people there. That would be not only our special needs adults who need apartments that are safe from the community. We could do something for seniors there and if possible, homeless families. So we should be combining money from the city, state, and federal government to make this work. Also have LPNs and home health aides that are able to go from one apartment to the other. So that would cut down on what services everybody could share more. We have a real problem, of course, with staffing right now, and I think everybody knows that. So we have a real problem with FI's as well. They all have different roles. They want different wording. Brokers are going a little nuts trying to keep up with all the things that they want us to change. The care managers have to be changing the life plans. So the only thing I can say is I have forty-one years of experience. I've been through the traditional system. And my daughter has had self-direction since two thousand nine. And she's thriving with it, but only because I have really good staff that have stuck with me. This is very hard to maintain and some families are not good at it at all. In other words, there are holes everywhere in the Swiss cheese. Let's start from person-centered planning with CCOs that are responsible to our individuals. Thank you for your time and thank you for letting me talk today.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Steve Conia. Steve, you should be unmuted.
Do you hear me?
We can.
Yes. Yeah, I'm a parent. And I'm not really prepared with paragraphs for you guys, but I'm speaking from as a parent and an advocate. My son's thirty-two years old. He was diagnosed with autism twenty-eight years ago. Well, not diagnosed, but we knew there was issues twenty-eight years ago. There wasn't anything like these CCOs out there or agencies to help us back then. So I kind of had to wing it with some of this stuff. He's now thirty-two. He's an adult. He gets self-direction. He gets services through Life Plan in New York State, which is good except for the self-direction piece. Because my son, when he goes, went through COVID, his budget is a certain amount. And it's capped with the transportation. Well, when they closed his day hab and reopened it, they wouldn't bus him anymore because of COVID restrictions. So we had to do it. And I'm a therapeutic foster parent. I have my hands full and I couldn't do it all the time. I had to get somebody else to do it. That transportation money was gobbled. That transportation money was gobbled up quickly. And then we couldn't move it around because it was capped out. So that's one of the issues. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I was on the board of Family Advocacy Center, which was an FSS program with the state. They wouldn't, they closed our agency after 47 years of serving 235 families. The reason we went to them was because it was a small agency. When I called them for services for my son, they'd answer the phone. Try doing that with some of the ones nowadays that are out there, that are some of the agencies that are out there. You're not going to get anybody and it's going to be a while before somebody gets back to you. For that $235,000 contract of the FSS dollars that we lost, 235 families are out there in our area in the United County not getting services. And there's a few places, a few of the parents are getting educational advocacy. They're not, most of them aren't. I'm actually doing it, some of it on my own for it because I have quite a bit of experience doing that kind of stuff. I've been trying to help families in our area. Look, I, for the first time in my life, I want to say that I see light at the end of the tunnel. I think Carrie Neufeld is perfect for this job. I met her, I attended a couple of things down in Albany. She actually came to my son's college works in a, or CMBCC program to speak. So I know she's out there trying, but, and there's a lot of parents that want to help. And I think a lot of parents have ideas. All I ask is to keep listening. You keep reaching out like this and try and solve some of this because there's a lot of issues out there. There's a lot of people falling through the cracks and I see it and hear it every day in what I do. Like I said, we do therapeutic foster care and we have a lot of kids that come through our house have disabilities because we're the high-needs children foster home. They need help and I want to be able to send these people somewhere. And right now, there's not a lot of services to help us. So I appreciate Carrie, what you're doing and I'll let you go. Let you go. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Nina Bakoyanis. You should be unmuted.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Nina Bakoyanis. I'm from New York City. I'm a consumer of OPWDD services and I have been since I was a child. So I'm very glad that we're having this discussion on the five-year plan and I really, really think that what needs to be really reworked is the way that the housing subsidy is structured. Because yes, it's a matter of funding 1,000%, but it's also about creating policy that respects and centers consumers and understands the complexity of finding housing as a disabled person. And there are three kind of main points that I want to make here. And the first one is that typically in a housing subsidy or voucher in New York City, it is structured like Section 8, right? They'll give you some sort of preliminary approval with a payment standard, with a, with an amount of money that you are to go out and, and look for in rent. And so then you would be able to have some idea of what price range to be looking for. OPWDD does not do that. The way that OPWDD structures the housing subsidy is that you are supposed to go out, find an apartment, somehow secure a lease, go back to OPWDD and give them this information and then you find out how much money you are to be given. And I'm sorry, but this is the most backwards policy. Anyone who's familiar with renting apartments in New York City knows that you cannot just go to a landlord and say, hey, I have this subsidy that's going to give me some sort of amount. Please give me a lease so I can ask them, right? That's not really how this works. Any adult here knows that and it concerns me that OPWDD has this very, very not user-friendly policy. Because to be quite honest, first of all, how are we supposed to know what to look for? How am I supposed to go out and find an apartment if I don't know what it will cover? Second of all, what New York City landlord will hold the apartment for me? And now this is a matter of equity, right? This is a class issue. Because if this is truly the way that OPWDD plans on structuring it, this means that it's saving the housing subsidy for people who come from families who can go out, find an apartment, secure a lease, pay for it, and wait months to get some sort of reimbursement that's probably a quarter of the price of the actual apartment. And that's a class issue and that's an equity issue. And that is a problem that OPWDD needs to be addressing. Secondly, the payment standards, as someone else here before we mentioned, are unbelievably unrealistic. I was approved for a housing subsidy in my self-direction budget for $1,100. Anyone in New York City knows that I'm not finding an apartment in that price range. I'm glad that there's discourse about it being improved, but this passed through the state budget and we are waiting. I have a housing opportunity that's passing me by because no one is giving me a payment standard and no one in OPWDD is really, truly committed to understanding how this process works for disabled individuals. And the last point that I want to make too is that there's not a lot of room for reasonable accommodations in this payment standard. Because as we all know, developmental disabilities is defined very broadly. My housing needs as someone that uses a wheelchair is going to look exponentially different than someone who, you know, has autism and doesn't necessarily have trouble getting up the stairs, right? I need things like elevators and large bathrooms and these things that to able-bodied people are luxuries, to things that will cost thousands of dollars in Brooklyn, in Queens, in Manhattan that I can't afford, my family can't afford, and I'm sure the most of New York City disability scene cannot afford. And if OPWDD is not committed to truly understanding and being in tune with those different kinds of disabilities, then they are not committed to Olmsted. They are allowing systemic violence to keep happening. They're allowing disabled people to continually be institutionalized and left out of housing needs. And I am, I am so tired. I am tired of asking for the bare minimum. I am tired of fighting for myself and my peers. And we face enough discrimination in housing as is and OPWDD is perpetuating that by not allowing us to have the payment standards and not increasing it. And I thank you for listening and I hope that I'm heard and I hope that this changes as quickly as it can. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Next is Brendan Klein. Brendan, you should now be unmuted.
Hello, my name is Brendan Klein and thank you so much for having me. One, there needs to be increased rate pay for DSPs and improved professional training for DSPs and caregivers and hire more professional support staff. Two, more training opportunities for job employment for people that's busy. More safety cameras in group home and other ways beside cameras to keep people in group home safe. More activities in day program and open more day program that I just heard yesterday, the day programs just closed down yesterday. Improve hiring progress to support staffs. There needs to, should be more training for staff for, with medical health emergency situations and more support for people that's, for people who with medical health in the community. And, and I, and another one is there needs to be more affordable housing for people that's busy in our community and we need more sub-advocates in our community as well.
Thank you, Brendan. With that, we've made it through all of the people who have pre-registered to speak this evening. At this point, we will open it up to others who might be interested in speaking that had not previously registered. If you are interested in speaking, we ask that you raise your virtual webex hand. And then, once we have a number of people have raised their hands, I'll call on your name and we'll send a note to unmute you. You'll have to unmute on your end once you receive it. So I'll give it one moment so people can raise their hands if interested in speaking. So the first speaker will be Elizabeth. Elizabeth, we're sending you a note to unmute yourself at this point. Elizabeth, you're now unmuted.
Okay, yeah, so I'm Elizabeth. I have three kids that have, you know, I didn't plan for this, so I speak anything, so just hear me out. I have three kids. One of them is terminally ill. I have, I have OPWDD and it seems to be like, I don't know where am I supposed to turn? I am a parent. I left work. I don't get an income. I don't get anything, okay? I had to leave my job because I have to be taking my little one because he's terminally ill, has autism. My other two girls are also on the spectrum. And it seems like no one knows anything. How to do this, how to do that? And then they tell me, oh, you could get reimbursed for emergency respite. Then when I'm looking for the, for the, for the reimbursement, oh, we ran out of money. So no agency has reimbursement money. Nobody can help me. And, and it's like, when I ask the manager, the CCO for my child, okay? Her supervisor tells me, oh, what about you ask the home attendant to stay with your child so you can go to work? And she takes your child to the doctor's office, like to doctor's appointment. How am I supposed to take my terminally ill child? Let him go with a home attendant to the appointment so I can go to work? Like what makes sense? Who, who does, who, who, who in what head? How am I supposed to let my child go with someone else, a stranger to a doctor's appointment? And, and it seems like, oh, we don't, nobody knows. Nobody knows this, that. And I'm just trying to figure out, how is the system supposed to help me? I'm supposed to be taking him all the time to doctor's appointment. I have a year and a half trying for Medicaid to pay for the diapers. I'm unemployed and I'm not getting unemployment. And, oh, Medicaid, because his dad has health insurance, oh, we should be able to afford to buy the diapers and buy everything that he needs just because his dad has, has health insurance, primary insurance. And Medicaid doesn't want to pick up the, the payment. So I, I am like, no one, the system is just, doesn't work. I don't know how it's supposed to work. I just started having OPWDD and listening to other speakers. They have 30 years, 20 years, 40 years. I have less than two, three years and I'm lost. I am a mom. I'm lost and I'm unemployed. And every time I go somewhere, oh, he has primary health insurance. His dad can pay for everything. So let his dad pay for everything. You know what? No, that doesn't work because his dad is not able to do that. So, yes, thank you. I'm lost. I wish this system can have a better way to, to work for parents like me.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sue. Sue will be sending the request to unmute yourself. You should be unmuted now.
And I applaud everyone that has already spoken and I agree with everything that's been said. Thank you for allowing me this time. This is an exciting time to see OPWDD allow the public to weigh in on important issues. If I'm not the only one to bring up the Justice Center process, then it only needs to be stressed that the Justice Center slash mental hygiene slash OPWDD incident reporting process needs to be revisited under your new strategic initiative. Incident filings have resorted to a paper pushing process. I have personally witnessed its failure to protect the disabled and instead protect some rogue behavior by staff and potentially, potentially criminal behavior. The routine unsubstantiated findings in the face of personally witnessing neglect and abuse is distressing. On page 22, you talk about recruitment, retention, and quality of the workforce. With a current turnover rate of 36%, please allow me to go full circle with this. Improving your ability to address the incident reporting system will address real problems in IRA homes and will improve employee retention rates and levels. Why? Because if one in four people statistically work with a quote "bad apple" unquote, then with using your figure of 36%, OPWDD is seeing a 1.5 in four-person ratio of your staff feeling that they are working with a bad apple. That suggests people may be leaving because of problem employees that are glued into the system. And please understand, I'm talking about IRA residential homes under OPWDD. Let me be more specific. My brother's IRA house has been, has been said to have, and including me, has been said to have a clique of some bad actors controlling the house. That their rights outweigh the rights of the disabled and the disabled's civil rights and that's unacceptable. Please consider making changes to the incident reporting system under your strategic plan that stops using, that stops the agency from using family to monitor and police your houses. So I can almost hear you saying, but incident reports are a dime a dozen. But they wouldn't be if you consider introducing audio and video into the common living environments, the common living rooms for houses that have extensive incident report occurrences and where this, these are a problem. If it is only seen by upper management, then having an audio and a video in common rooms is not a violation of the disabled person's rights. You're protecting them because they cannot speak for themselves. They are often blamed in these incident reports. Instead of problem staff, again, I can't stress from someone who's worked my entire life that if you have, if you can get, if you can focus on creating a positive environment in those houses, you're going to be able to retain good staff and your golden staff, but that's not always happening. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Danielle. Danielle will be sending the response for you to unmute. You should be unmuted now.
Danielle Carney. I'm a family care provider, which means that I take care of individuals with developmental disabilities out of my own personal residence. We have seen a crisis over the last few years, probably due to COVID. But even well before that, I have been around family care for most of my life. I've also worked in homes as well. Just a few things I'd like to bring up. Our programs close without a moment's notice. When we signed our paperwork with OPWDD, it stated in that paperwork that one provider must have a full-time position or a full-time job outside of the home or inside of the home, what, what have you nowadays. We don't know when our programs are going to close. We have nowhere for our individuals to go for the day. We don't know what we're going to do. We, as family care providers, do not get sick time. We do not get vacation time. We do not get benefits. We do not get a IRA or a 401K. We don't get health benefits. We're kind of out here on our own and with, with no one to turn to. We do have a family care treatment team leader that we go to. It's always, I can't help you. There's nothing I can do. The cost of living has increased dramatically. We don't get any sort of stipends or anything in order to maintain our, our housing, our air conditioning, our heating to support these people, these individuals that live with us. We're in the dark about our, about the chain of command. We don't know who is in charge, who to turn to, who to talk to. We're working through COVID with, with no help, no guidance. Our whole house got it. We were sick for a few days. We had no help. We were forced to get out of bed in the morning and go about our, our daily activities. Our vacation time is fully paid for by us directly if we're lucky enough to find respite providers that are willing to take our, our individuals and that we can trust. That's another thing is making sure the people that are taking care of our individuals are trusted. And out of our money that we get paid for twenty-four, seven care sometimes, pays for ten days, twelve days of vacation, um, our, our whole monthly salary is gone. I do have my mother here too. She couldn't get on at her home. She would like to speak, um, as well if, if possible. Um, her name is Regina.
That's fine. Regina can speak now.
Hello, my name is Regina Liakino. I'm a family care provider, just like my daughter. Twenty-five years of family care. Almost forty, no, thirty-six years working with people with disabilities. We're the only two family care providers that have site access. There's any kind of these meetings, we have absolutely no support. We can go to the family care coordinator for them. And we do ask questions. Maybe once in a while we might get an answer. I've asked for much needed time off. I have four men that I have had in my home twenty-five years. I'm a ninety-two-year-old. I have another gentleman in his middle seventies. That is a lot of work, a lot of care, twenty-four, seven. I get absolutely no time off. I was promised time off through my team treatment leader and the family care coordinator. There is no one that has an extra benefit willing to take one of my gentlemen there. So the alternative is to, they suggested to me that he, I could, uh, request that he goes into an IRA. Now, to me, that was a very emotional statement. He's been with me the whole time, twenty-five years. He knows us. He's autistic. He's non-verbal. He gets his needs met. He does very well with us. And I think it was a slap in the face that they said maybe it's time that he goes into an IRA. And the IRAs are full. I've heard some good things about IRAs. I've heard some bad things about IRAs. So that is just not option. That, that's the answer they gave me when I asked for time off. I haven't had a vacation in fifteen years. Before that, it was ten years. So, you know, it's, family care has no support. There's no one to, we talk to people, we get nowhere. So I'm just asking if, if we can talk to someone, if someone would talk to us that are making these decisions in Albany, wherever they're making them, if they would talk to us in family care and help us get through some of these things. I, I don't know a person out there that wants to work three hundred and fifty days a year, but we do. And we do get women's bills. We do get a difficulty of care payment. When I figured out my difficulty of care payment, on one of my gentlemen, I make a dollar an hour. So I, I make roughly three dollars and fifty cents an hour. That's family care. Family care, those rules are totally different than, than other rules. We need, we need, we need somebody to talk to higher than where we've been trying to get. You know, please, someone, if anybody knows anything, please help us. We're just asking for some help. I thank you for your time and, and was really glad I got to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Mary Ann Resnick. Mary Ann, we're sending you, um, the note to unmute now. You should be unmuted.
Okay. Uh, we all know that inflation and low wages are a recipe for disaster. We are currently in the midst of that disaster and the fear is that it will only get worse. As parents of an adult son, Jeff, with ADD, we believed that we had solved his future. He is involved with employment, day programs, happily living in a certified residence with five of his longtime buddies. Originally, the residence was chock full of staff, which allowed the necessary appointments as well as recreation. Too many times recently, we have been called upon to fill the huge gaps that are getting worse daily. These changes have interfered with Jeff living the meaningful life that he's worked so hard for. While we are delighted that there is a long-awaited 507 plan, which has achievable goals in the long run, we need to be fleshed out, we need it to be fleshed out so that the work that has been done in creating the plan can be realized. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Jessica Dugan. Jessica, you should receive the note now about unmuting yourself. You should be unmuted. Jessica? I'm not sure if you're muted in multiple ways. Uh, while we're waiting, um, to figure out Jessica's situation, uh, if anybody else would like to speak that has not already had a chance to do so, just a reminder, you can raise your virtual WebEx hand, which will be next to your name. And that will flag to us that you are interested in providing comment this evening. Jessica, are you, um, with us still? We do have you shown as unmuted on our end. All right, we're going to shift to the next speaker. Please feel free to put comments in the chat, um, if you'd like to still share. The next speaker is Katie Barz. Katie? You should be receiving a notice to unmute yourself. You are now unmuted.
Jessica, and Commissioner, for all the, um, hard work and time that you've put into, uh, the stakeholder hearings. I'm here today, um, as a sibling and as a member of NIAID, New York Alliance for Developmental Disabilities. And I'd just like to share a summary, trying to get in under three minutes, um, of our written response for this draft plan. NIAID, Commissioner, applauds the new administration and your team for writing a draft document that will provide a pathway to a strategic plan for the next five years. The plan contains great ideas, but does not focus on the metric-driven solutions that are measurable. NIAID joins providers and their associations, families, self-advocates and DSPs imploring OPWDD's 5017 to include baseline data for each goal and objective as well as targets and annual benchmarks for those five years. These are our NIAID member priorities as we have pulled them. Number one, addressing the workforce crisis. We all believe that this is a crisis, not a shortage, and needs to be a priority, number one. Number two, expanding residential opportunities for the most vulnerable and complex profiles as well as supports for them. Number three, embracing employment for all, including those with the most complex profiles. And number four, including family support services programs which support families and caregivers. Last, number five, enhancing assisted technology innovations for health and safety as well as self-advocacy. Our number one priority, the OPWDD workforce staffing shortages, or what we call a crisis. Without a workforce, there is no service delivery in any of our goals. The member feedback says that NIAID members are extremely concerned that the 507 plan does not provide for any immediate 2022 permanent increases in DSP hourly rates. They're equally concerned that OPWDD is not calling or treating this as a crisis and is using the available data to support this designation. The most glaring deficiency in the plan is the absence of stepped annual wage increase to get DSPs to a living wage. This is absolutely and unequivocally must be the foundation of the plan. Without a quality, stable workforce, none of the other parts of the plan are valid. I have twenty seconds left, so I think I'll start there. Our priorities are five, um, and, and we hope that you'll consider the document that we have sent in to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to try Jessica again. Um, Jessica, you should be unmuted. Jessica, I'm not sure if you're joining by phone or computer. Sometimes there's a mute on our end and then also mute on your phone. We'll shift to the next speaker and we'll keep, we'll keep trying to see if you're able to join. So the next speaker is going to be Anne Marie. Anne Marie, you should be receiving a notice. You should be unmuted, Anne Marie.
You hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Fitzpatrick. I live on Long Island. I did write, um, a note, but, um, you know, after listening to everybody, I wanted to just add some of these comments. I agree with everyone. It's all the things that have been said before. But when we talk about supporting people in the most person-centered ways, my son attends Inclusive View at Syracuse. However, it's a four-year program and the self-direction budget really only covers two years. So it's a four-year program like everybody else. But it's only covered for the transition piece. If it's only covered for two years, which limits the, the program from hiring enough staff to support it and to really make it, um, you know, uh, be able to help support them with internships and, and, um, support them in their housing situation because they live on, my son lives on campus. So I hope that that will someday, um, be reviewed. Secondly, with that is, um, this year, we're not getting the support of the residential mentor because there were some issues with how, what Medicaid will cover. And so I'm hoping that in the future, that the residential supports can be, um, direct pay to the students first because it's a, it's a really important piece of, um, his success at, um, this, um, program, which is a great program. It's really wonderful. As far as employment, um, very concerned about employment for the future and, um, getting him support, one, getting him support and two, getting him a job. He wants to work in, uh, radio broadcasting. But I just don't know how I'm going to do that. How am I going to find him that? And I really think New York State needs to do a better job of helping, um, you know, getting employers becoming more aware of why they need to hire people with disabilities. I'm not going to go into more detail because it's, it's complicated. I think there needs to be more direct pay. I know it's not my financial burden for me, but for other parents to have to put out money and then get reimbursed. I worked as an advocate, um, with low-income families and they just can't do it. It is a huge burden and needs to be looked at. Budget changes take a long time. They, they, they take too long. I won't go into everything else. I will, um, there just needs to be more support for our, for the DSPs. They need to be paid a living wage. They can't make, you know, you can't live on Long Island making fifteen to twenty dollars an hour. You just can't. And I think we need to make it into a career. So I will leave it at that. I did send in my comments and I appreciate, um, everybody's comments today and I support that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, the next speaker is Sandy Neighbors. Sandy, you should be receiving a request unmute. You should now be unmuted.
I am a parent of a young man with autism. I have to make a comment about the CCOs. I don't think it was addressed in the 507 plan, but my experience with the CCOs have been terrible. They don't know about the OPWDD programs. They don't know about government benefits. And they don't seem to care about your child. Uh, I had one good care manager. He happened to be a supervisor. But when the, uh, CCO reorganized, he was fired. So I lost the best care manager I ever had. And since then, I've had quite a few and I have not been happy. I think they, the, uh, the care managers have to be better educated. They have to know about the resources that are out there. They have to know about government benefits and they have to care about your child. I have to say, at the life plans that I have attended, it seemed that the care managers seemed to be more interested in pushing around papers than knowing about what my child really needs. And I'm sure other parents have experienced the same thing. So I just wanted to let you know that I really hope the CCOs can improve because I am a parent who is well-versed. I am also a professional and I really think the CCOs have to be vastly improved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Natalie Ferguson. Natalie, you're now unmuted.
For, um, for allowing me to speak, my name is Natalie Ferguson and I am the parent of a, uh, eighteen-year-old autistic child. And, um, I just wanted to mention, I've been listening and I really appreciated hearing, um, everyone's thoughts. But I wanted to mention a particular shot, uh, mention about the, uh, the brokers and getting them a sort of a pay increase or a living wage. My understanding is that they make like forty dollars an hour with no raises in pay in about the last ten years. They don't get paid any, any sick time or health insurance or gas reimbursement. And, you know, I, I really appreciate and have to speak extremely highly of the brokers that I have come in contact with, especially the one that works with me. Through COVID, uh, especially through this whole process of starting self-direction. She's been more of a, more than just a broker. She has been a support. Her name is Karen Kaiser and the Soyand Group. She's been a tremendous area of support to me and my son. She's been a shoulder to cry on. She's helped me to navigate the whole maze of OPWDD and self-direction. And not also, and also the, the pain and the hurt and the stress of, of, of having a, a, a child and now a young adult who is on the autism spectrum. She's helped me to navigate through so much, um, different, um, of issues. And, um, with COVID, when I couldn't get staff, she has been, you know, the one through, true constant that I can call any day of the night for, for support, for guidance, for, for, for help. I mean, she, she goes above and beyond as well as the people of the Soyand Group. And, and I think, you know, they should be, these brokers, when you find good people, they should be recognized, they should be compensated, they should be reimbursed, they should be appreciated. And, um, they should be afforded at, uh, paid sick time, health insurance, and, um, you know, the, the gratitude of, of being paid a living wage, especially in the economy that we have right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is The next speaker is Russell Snath. You're now muted. Hello, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Russell Snath. I'm a parent of a young man who's 26 years old who lives in Ira. And I'm also a founding member of the New York Alliance for Developmental Disabilities, NIAID, and I'm in Hopock. I wanted to commend and applaud the Commissioner and her leadership team for their work on the 507 plan and creating these sessions and forums to receive public input. I do believe that in order to make the 507 plan more than just a white paper, that we do need to take heed and listen to the people who are asking for baseline data and metrics with goals and progress reporting built into the process in order to make the 507 plan more than just a white paper, but really an instrument for change that has teeth and meaning. And when you go up the ladder to the legislature or to the governor and you have the data to back it up with baselines against the goals, all of the goals make sense. All of the text and the goals in the 507 plan are aspirational ideals and make sense. We want to improve the workforce. We want to employ, provide more housing and employment opportunities and technology. But in order to get there, the plan has to be a little bit more detailed and specific. To me, workforce, workforce, workforce. If we don't have a workforce, the 507 plan, a five-year strategic plan, is predicated on the assumption that there's going to be a system in five years. If we don't have a pathway to a living wage in a five-year plan, we're going to have a five-month plan and that's going to be the end. We're in a crisis. We need to address the workforce. We need to build up site-based day programs. We need cameras in residences until or unless other safety measures like a higher-quality workforce that has less turnover and other measures are implemented to ensure the safety and protection of our individuals from neglect and abuse. So the argument against cameras is very hard to handle when we have so many incidents of unknown origin and there's so many injuries and harm that individuals are experiencing when you can just utilize audio and video to get right to the bottom of a situation, deter things from happening in the first place and protect good staff. So to me, the center pieces of the five-year plan have to be around the workforce. I understand around quality and training and all of the things we want to do around certifications and cooperatives and all those other things. But when a system and a problem is hemorrhaging, you need to take immediate action to stabilize it. And I think that needs to be the top priority in the five-year plan. Workforce, workforce, workforce. Thank you very much and I applaud your efforts and appreciate the partnership.
Thank you. At this point, we are going to try Jessica again. Jessica, you should be unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me this time?
We can hear you this time.
Apologize for the microphone issue. So yeah, I'll try and be quick. Yeah, so my name is Jessica Dugan. I'm the mother to a five-year-old little girl with a genetic diagnosis of SINGAP syndrome. She'll need care her whole life. I'm relatively new to OPWDD. I'm a novice, but I'm very thankful that it exists for her. And I'm also a volunteer with the SINGAP Research Fund, which is an advocacy organization for SINGAP syndrome. And so I really just wanted to make three points. The first is the bureaucracy and complexity that was involved in setting up OPWDD services was intense. It was opaque, immense manual, and it's clearly a barrier to equity and access. I don't understand why it took a year to set up for my daughter when she has a clearly lifelong disabling diagnosis. And I know other parents with my child's diagnosis who simply don't have the ability to navigate the complexity to access OPWDD services and they really need it. So the workflow to access needs simplification and a whole accessibility review around the acronyms, language used, et cetera. The second point is, as so many people have mentioned, the livable wage for regular childcare professionals in Manhattan where I live is now a minimum of $25 per hour. And even that's rapidly becoming out of date with inflation, let alone hiring professionals who have the training to work with young children with global developmental delays, behavioral needs, and high support needs. And then my last point is, as a dual-income family, you know, with a good level of education, we still find it very difficult to access the budget for things that my child needs to live in the community and do the things that she wants to do with the flexibility that she needs to do them. And the rules on how she can access her budget seem arbitrary in many cases. And navigating the reimbursements for the activities that she needs to do and the care that she needs, it eats up the little time that we have to spend together as a family. And so I really would encourage OPWDD to look at how just navigating the system is impacting families. So many more people could benefit from these services if the system was made a little simpler to access.
Thank you. At this time, I have concluded all of those who have talked to speak this evening. So we'll now pass it back to the Commissioner for final remarks. Commissioner?
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and for sharing your thoughtful feedback and your concerns and your ideas for how we can continue to improve the 507 plan, which will lay out the five-year plan for how we can improve supports and services for individuals with developmental disabilities. I'm always struck by how many people come to these forums, you know, share honestly and truthfully about their own experiences and it always provides us with an opportunity to learn and understand better about the experience of the people that we're supporting with our system and that we can continue to think about ways to make improvements to the system. The experiences and the stories shared tonight, you know, will go a long way to helping us to do that. As Jessica talked about in her opening remarks, we will be finalizing our 507 plan over the course of the next several months, submitting a final draft to the legislature and to the governor on November 1. We look forward to submitting that. We look forward to continuing to partner with our community and to partner with our elected officials to support OPWDD, our providers, and the people that we support and serve in this system. So thank you again for participating this evening. Thank you to your support of this project over the course of the last year plus. We look forward to producing a final document soon. I hope everybody has a good night.
Thank you.